Yeah.
Do you join on your laptop?
No.
Okay.
All right, we are on and got one more minute to go, but.
Is that fine? Can we start now?
Yeah.
We will call the order and do our roll call for planning commission. It is now six thirty on Wednesday, December third, three five. Commissioner Matlock is joining us. Is it Teams or Zoom or online?
Teams, yes.
Teams.
Perfect. And then Commissioner White.
Present.
Commissioner Pereira.
Present.
Commissioner.
Brian.
Okay, thank you. She walk over is.
Present.
And Commissioner too. And now we'll move on to item number two, where office chief for public comment on these items. There's no one here person. Is there anyone online for anything that is for public comment for item two?
I believe it's just Brian that is the only other person other than Stephen.
Oh, is Brian on too?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Pitts given.
All eventually joined by teams. It's just not working for me, but I am present.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Brian. Sorry, I didn't mean to miss you. Okay, so we will, I guess we will open and close the public comment period at nine, sorry, at six thirty one. And number three, the approval from November fifth, or twenty five. Are there comments, questions, or we're looking for a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed?
Amanda, second.
We will move on to item number four, the sign regulations, including nonconforming signs, maintenance, and removal of signs, administrative enforcement, review processes, and civil infractions. And we'll turn it to staff to to present.
Good evening, commissioners. In your packet tonight, I have included a memo summarizing the changes that are proposed to a couple of sections of code, along with identifying two sections of code that detail nonconforming signs and maintenance and removal of signs. The memo describes the purpose and intention of some of the changes that are proposed to the overall title. And tonight, I'm just looking for feedback, answering questions, seeing if there's any changes you would like to be made to these sections. I anticipate sending this to legal by the end of the week when we want this, like you have incorporated into it. And then I'll be starting to work on residential sign standards. Additionally, I just wanted to provide a brief update on the sign code survey. We recently re-released the survey on November nineteenth, and it will run through December seventeenth. And as of today, I'm happy to report, we've already doubled our responses on that. So I'm really looking forward to hopefully getting some additional responses and being able to relay that feedback to you once we start talking about commercial sign standards.
Does doubling mean it went from one to two?
Went seventeen to like thirty six, I think. Yeah. We've also done an in-person campaign, dropping off flyers and talking to local businesses, which has been really appreciated so far. We've had a lot of positive interactions doing that.
Thank you. So this, there's no public hearing with this, so I think we can talk amongst the commission. Any thoughts or comments on this for staff?
Sure. If I don't mind, I'll just go. Is it cool if I just go through my comments and then? All right, I guess we'll start on page seven, very top. The term building official is used a few times, and capitalization seems to be inconsistent. At some points, building official was capitalized, others it wasn't. Not sure what the appropriate. You have capitalization there. Someone. Okay. Also on page seven, section A two, it says the city has a right to enter private property for the purpose of inspection. This section is specifically commercial property, right? I mean, it doesn't need to be specified that it's commercial property. I mean, just reading that sentence sounds.
It could be non-commercial property as well. So that's for the purpose, then somebody has an active permit. Part of review of that permit would be inspections.
Okay.
Horizons. And of course, it's, you know, it's not just we, somebody barging.
Yes. Right. Page nine. Or a it says if a sign is illegally displayed a second time, a fee per sign will need to be paid. And I was wondering if it's appropriate to list what that fine might be and or cite where the fine is established in some other section of code?
Yeah, so that would be established in the fee schedule, which
Okay.
right now, I don't believe that we necessarily have an explicit fee called out. That is something that we would like to tack on to the next iteration of the fee schedule update. I think we did two or three updates this year already, so it'll probably be something we work on in the springtime.
Okay. Do you want to have a little line there saying that referencing to a fee schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
I had one on the same section, E four, in eighteen twenty nine ninety. Was just curious if we want to mention, it says signs may be relocated, and they'll have a two weeks to get a hold of them. Is it worth putting where they're going to be located at? Yeah, we could say it's City Hall.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
Some of my signs disappeared, and I'm trying to figure out where to go get it in that two-week period.
Page ten. Section D four. Talking about sign abandonment, and I'm just wondering, I mean, who pays for the removal of that sign if the business is no longer there? And what if it's a sign that is embedded in concrete or mounted beside a building? Could be expensive removal. Is the city going to have to incur the expense to remove that? Or do you have a way to track the previous owners to?
So abandonment just means abandonment for the purpose of the regulations. It doesn't mean actually physically removed.
Okay.
It just means that if it's been left vacant, you lose that potential grandfathering status that allows you to continue to
Gotcha.
maintain a nonconforming sign.
Cool, thanks. Page eleven, section A four. Excuse me, I was wondering if the city already has rules governing graffiti removal and timeframe. And if not, I think I think there shouldn't be a graffiti removal somewhere in the municipal code. And I think I would prefer it to be less than sixty days. I feel like two months of allowing business or even a private residence to have graffiti displayed is not great. That was really artistic graffiti.
Thanks, E.
Yeah, yeah.
What would you want to see it reduced to?
I mean, I would, I would shoot for ten days. I don't know. For some reason, that arbitrary ten days seems reasonable to me. That's two business, two business weeks.
Is there reference to graffiti in the sign regulations or?
No, this is a new addition regarding the maintenance signs. It's also includes damage. Two weeks might be a little tight for damaged sign to get fixed.
Right, yeah. So I, yeah, I was focusing mostly on the graffiti, suggesting either does it already, does graffiti remove already exist in the other code that I don't know about? And then, yeah, to your point, it should be, I would like to see it on a separate item.
Where, I, which section is it?
Or on eleven, but.
My question with it would be if they are doing it themselves, or if they're hiring somebody to do that, and how long? How long does it take a professional to come and remove that? That would be my only question. I agree with you, sixty days is a long time, but that's my thought with it.
Yeah, and there's certainly an element of that, but I mean, I feel like for non-business owner, and at a minimum, they can at least provide the city with, you know, documentation that says, oh, yes, we have someone scheduled to come out. This literally gets them.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, Sydney needs to be heavy-handed.
Right.
So we do have graffiti regulations. Title of the code entirely. So eight point four oh is graffiti. They have forty-eight hours to remove it.
Oh, that's. Let's reduce, let's separate out vandalism and graffiti in this section. So graffiti should be removed in forty-eight hours.
Or just maybe reference to the graffiti chapter.
Yeah, damage could also be different than vandalized, like somebody hit it with a car or something. Yeah, so do we want to keep just general vandalization in sixty days, just because it takes time to schedule someone to come out? And then we'll just amend the section to reference the graffiti section with regard to graffiti removal. Although if it's toilet paper, that could probably be cleaned up in forty hours.
Probably.
Define graffiti. Just curious. I don't know if I can read it in this, that's provided. Because I'm just curious, like, at what point, what if someone's doing to their own sign? Like, we have, I forget the organization here, but over by Ace, they painted the whole side of their building.
Yeah, so the definition of graffiti gets to that, means unauthorized inscription, if you're meaning rather defacement.
Unauthorized by the owner?
Yeah.
So if the owner is doing it themselves, they could do whatever they want.
Yeah.
And there's no.
Yeah.
And so for them, if someone else did it, but they don't want to clean it within forty-eight hours, they'll just say, we're happy with this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Going to page twelve, three, A three. Think signs that advertise that Canada passed. I think it should be P A S T instead of P A S F C D.
I'm sorry, which section is?
Yeah, page twelve, it's three, A three.
It is P A.
Oh. Yeah, we'll fix that.
Next is page thirteen. Section B in that sentence, demolition permit shall be required prior to the removal of any ground-mounted sign exceeding six feet in height. I was just is this height requirement based off of anything? Because, for example, like, no parking signs that are mounted on parkways and stuff like that, those are ground-mounted, and they're higher than six feet. So when the city has to do work and remove those signs, does that mean they have to get a permit to take out no parking signs? And do you see where I'm going with this a little bit?
It's a building code-related thing. I think we could probably get more clarification from Colin Mercer, our building official, because I agree, it's not going to be for a stop sign. That's over six feet. It's, it's more structure.
Yeah. So that's all I had.
Yeah, I think the intention here is just public safety with regard to removing, like, monument signs that tend to be very tall, have a heavy-weighted sign at the top. I think that's really the only intention behind that, not a stop sign.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but you know, the requirement of getting a permit adds costs and, you know, you know, bureaucratic red tape for a property owner to, you know, like if it is just a no parking sign, similar, something like that, which most people could just do, you know, four screws and take the sign out of the concrete and be done with it, to require them to get permitted and go to City Hall and all that processing is excessive. So maybe there could be more specific
Yeah.
information. Next, page fourteen, in the paragraph at the very top, all of that is below, has this verifiable standard scale. And I mean, I'm not, this is not, I'm taught by any means, I don't know what it says, but one inch equals twenty feet, or one sixteenth inch equals one foot. So if you have sixteen sixteenths as equivalent to sixteen feet. So sixteen sixteenths is an inch. So the first one says one inch equals twenty feet, and the second one, if you do the math, it's one inch equals sixteen feet. So I'm not sure what the scaled. I'm not sure what the scale and thing is supposed to say here, because one inch equals two different things.
Is it a range? Maybe, maybe I don't understand either, but I took it as it being arranged, like you could scale it either way or something in between.
Yeah, I was delving for.
I'm just trying to catch up where you're at.
Oh, sure. Yeah, sorry.
Very top of page fourteen, at the beginning, end of the first paragraph.
Yeah. Application will not be considered complete.
Okay, thanks.
One inch.
It just say or, so it's not like between.
But no less than.
I think we could just get rid of the second part, because that's, has confusion. So no less than one inch equals twenty feet.
Okay.
Correct.
That seems like a large scale, though. If you're trying to do something smaller than that.
It's less than exact twenty feet.
Yeah. So you do need a different scale, but less than, and an or is weird.
Or maybe just add the second part.
It's likely because some sign plans include supplementary sign package that covers types of site signs, so like parking signs or like guiding signs that tend to be smaller. And plan designers don't necessarily want to take up an entire page to show some of those smaller supplementary signs that are shown throughout the site. So think of like a, like a fast food restaurant. You have a tiny little drive-through sign. You have, you know, maybe other supplementary, like vehicle directional signage around the site. It's probably all shown on one sheet, which is probably why the scale seems very, very small. That's my best guess, too. But we can double-check with the building official on minimum scale size.
There's, there's got to be a standard that people have used.
Honestly, it's probably not an issue these days. This was back when some middles were on paper, and you wanted to make sure you could actually read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now that it's all electronic.
Right, on page sixteen, on B, there's this maximum daily penalty of a thousand dollars. And personally, I'm not a fan of hard-coded numbers. Because then if we ever want to update it, then you have to always go back in and review these things. But additionally, I mean, when you hardcode a number like this, the penalty ends up being potentially regressive for small businesses who a thousand dollars potentially big, has a bigger impact on their bottom line versus like the mall where Nike is, where, you know, it's going to have a far smaller impact. So.
No, this is sliding, so it just says no maximum.
Yeah, there's a lot of discretion on this section for the building official to make with regard to what the daily penalty will be. They're not necessarily a hard number that we are anticipating to propose based on what the issue is. It's more, I think Colin's perspective of this is that it's more came to the level of not addressing the issue and the frequency of the issue happening. So for instance, there's a business and we give them three code citations separately for the same thing, but they keep doing it. Then that's the situation where we would want to consider a more harsh penalty to discourage people from doing the same thing over and over again. But again, it's more discretionary.
Well, in that, in that case, it's a maximum of a thousand.
Enough.
You know.
That's why we added daily to this paragraph.
Yeah, I did, I did read about that.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to open some discussion, though.
Yeah, understandable.
And that's it for all my comments. Thanks for patience.
All right, who's next?
I had one more.
Yeah.
I think it's, let me just confirm the page. I think it's eleven. Ten. It was ten and D four. If signs being determined as abandoned, is it, should we have anything in here where there's a reasonable effort made to contact property owner? I would suggest no, because then it becomes a burden for staff to track somebody else's project. So it's just for the purpose of nonconforming status. So it's not a problem if it's a conforming sign, but if it's some sign that no longer meets our sign regulations, they have a year to address it or maintain it. And if that doesn't happen, then they lose that status.
Okay. And then as a business owner, I would not be aware that that's being tracked by the city, other than just this having awareness that a sign being blank for a year. Like, there's no notification from the city from that. They just suddenly may not have a sign anymore out there.
Yeah, we, we just don't have the staff in to be able to track other people's projects and signs, you know.
But even with business licensing, isn't signing review that, so it's like, if they have a business license, they should use some of their signs, right?
The business license can be approved separate from the sign permit. But if they're doing something to change the sign structurally, it would have to come first.
Right. And that's not addressed in the application for business license.
No, and if a business is moving into a new building, they're likely annoying to have a building permit with us for interior work, even if it's very minor work, and will likely need a sign permit to do any work on the sign for the most part, in, in most cases.
There's like somewhere in city, they're tracking when the sign started being blank.
Yes, so that's at the point in which, and I think it's in the language here about the business license expires. So once that happens, then a year from then, the sign might be considered abandoned.
Yeah, okay. Well, and I do see the expired piece. I think it was more concerned than the first sentence is just determined to be abandoned with a blank for more than a year. And I'm not that worried about it, I'm just curious.
Do you have other questions? Any more or any online? Not that we can see you, but yes, Steve or Brian, do you have?
My good Commissioner White mentioned some stuff that I was going to bring up, so I thank him for his diligence and move on.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, unless Brian, you were about to talk.
Let's say we're safe to move on. Yep.
Okay. Good, let me crack here. I had a couple of questions. Okay, so on page ten, under nonconforming signs, I was just wondering, I have to remember why I wrote this thing on. So it's under A, maybe A two, nonconforming or no permit issued. So let's see, or do not meet today's sign code standards. Sorry, I read this a while ago, so I'm trying to remember my thought process.
A two, you mentioned?
Yeah, so add in an A two.
Oh, okay, to add, okay.
Two, there's just one. So currently, signs legally in existence, as of the effective date of this ordinance, that do not comply with the standards here and are deemed legally nonconforming and may continue to exist for this section. Okay. So one, legal nonconforming sign designation does not apply to signs that have received a notice of infraction or code enforcement violation prior to the effect of this ordinance. And then I was wondering if it would be appropriate to add a or no permit issued.
Would suggest no, because there's a lot of signs that there was no permit issued that happened before permits were required or before it came into the city limits.
Or it does not meet today's sign code standards. So if there's one that is sorry, I don't remember exactly why I wrote that. I had a purpose, but I don't remember what it is. So let me go into my other questions, see if I, if that jogs my memory. On page twelve, I was going to ask regarding temporary sign time limit. So when I looked at the definition of our temporary sign, it didn't appear that there was within that definition, a time limit for temporary signs. So I'm wondering if, you know, that might clear up some of this. I think that it's definitely helpful to check with legal about the content neutrality. That's perfect. But I'm wondering if specifying a time limit in the definition of this temporary signs would help enforce some of like, without getting into the content. So if a temporary sign is allowed for a certain amount of time, or, you know, if it's a critical time within.
Yeah, we may not have gotten into that section yet, but isn't there a whole section on temporary signs?
There is currently a whole section on temporary signs. It will be something that we do take a look at more closely in the new year.
Okay.
Um, I may want to leave some of it discretionary, because I think it would probably be more related to the subject application that's being requested. So a temporary sign could mean a weekend, or it can mean thirty days or longer potentially. So I guess I would want to revisit that.
Yeah, well, if we're going to cover that later, then perfect, we can look at it at that time. But also within, within, while I'm thinking about temporary signs, on page thirteen, I'm wondering if we want to include temporary signs as something that does not require a building permit. Because I think you want a building permit for a temporary sign. Or maybe you do.
We would.
I would prefer no, but there may be some signs that need a building permit for the sake of building code.
Okay.
Depending on the size and installation.
I can see like, you know, construction projects or that kind of temporary sign. But as of right now, it's not actually listed as something that would not require a permit.
Maybe we could place some sort of criteria for temporary signs that don't require a building permit and specify not triggering building permit review or.
I support that, because a lot of temporary signs are, not all, but some of them will be associated with like a special event. And then it would be attributed to like a special event permit more, ideally, more than a building permit. Yeah, we can add a section there about temporary signs being examined.
I think that was it for me. Any last thoughts from commissioners? Okay. And looks like, thank you, Caitlin. And we will move on to item five, the review and recommendation on twenty twenty-six docket list.
All right, yeah, so we had two dockets that we received this year. The first one, we get to that page.
Seventeen?
Yeah. Yeah, so got a docket from a property owner, Debbie Lucas Mallor. She owns the Chevron station, as well as another gas station in town. The Shell station down down here. And her interest specifically is to provide housing for employees. So she might have given up on this proposal at this point, but I think the docket should still move forward. It's her docket request. Her request more specifically is to allow upper-floor dwelling units in the interchange commercial zone. So right now, that's only allowed north of Benningham Boulevard and Alamo Mall. But I believe that it does make sense. It's consistent with policy to increase for more affordable housing options and to provide residences above businesses is an excellent way to do that, especially if you got somebody interested and willing to do that, to actually construct it. So the staff recommendation is to approve that docket, and that's then something that we take up as amendments in the next year, in twenty twenty-six.
Do you mind? I'm still learning all the zones in town here. I know north of Benningham, you mentioned the Alamo Mall, as I can see it up here. Is it all of north of Benningham? Yeah, it allows that. So even on the other side of the train tracks?
No, no, I'm sorry, we don't have a zoning map. We need, we.
We do.
Some that would be impacted by that would be here, where the safe way.
Well, that's, that wouldn't be what's impacted by that. That's what currently allows for it, I think, right?
No, it's up here that currently allows. So this would be the subject, the primary subject of the docket request, but it would apply to, I think the intent for this for all interchange.
Chevron's not that way, right?
Chevron's further north.
Chevron's right here.
Oh, Chevron.
I think the dealership.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, me too. I thought the same.
Yeah, yeah.
That one is the gas station.
Oh, yeah. So she's planning to do a major remodel of the gas.
Oh.
Is there anything for like restricting a similar thing on North Bend Way and downtown like the historic district? Do we limit that from being expanded vertically? No. So could people could build higher there?
Um, there is a thirty five foot limit or a forty five foot limit depending on where you're at in the downtown commercial zone. So our historic district is on thirty five feet and outside of that uh to the south is all forty five and certain areas to the north are forty five.
Yeah, in my mind, the only thing worth restricting would be like that. Oh, thank you. I see is yeah, the red. Just so you can see the mountain in your downtown historic area. It's not part of this docket at all. Yeah, I see is the purple section there.
All right, she will continue with the 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 store on the first floor and then she wants just to have like a second floor for.
Yeah, probably three stories.
Three stories, okay.
First floor is the convenience store. The seventh floor would be their office and then that four.
I say it seems like the sound works great for it.
Yeah.
It's right by the interchange.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah, so the staff supported. Uh, we'll look for planning commission recommendation on that as well.
Are there concerns from commissioners?
I'm I'm just wondering, do you know the history behind why this type of uh building is allowed north of Bendigo, but it doesn't, it didn't spread across?
That itself was an amendment last year during the twenty twenty four docket um complant process. If we were just looking to, we were thinking about the outlet mall and opportunities to redevelop it. So adding residential above commercial and it makes you scenario was a great thing for the outlet mall. It was specifically thinking of the outlet mall, but it makes sense to apply in some line. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any thoughts online?
I love it. Yeah, I think consistency is key. So um, yeah, my vote to approve when it's third time.
Is there any time to expanding that too? Cause actually purple is also trucked outside, but the interchange mixed use. Is that already allowed for that?
Already allows for the council. Yeah.
That would make more sense.
Hey, we heard from commissioners in person, any other thoughts? And Commissioner Fitzgibbons, um, Commissioner Matlock, did you have anything on this?
No, no, I read through it. I'm interested to see what the next year is gonna bring.
Lot of work. I think my only concern is, you know, what potentially could happen uh over the next forty or fifty years or something like that. If uh, let's say for the Safeway is they added a bunch of apartments above that. I mean, traffic already in that area, you know, especially on weekends and travelers are coming in. Uh, that intersection is always super busy. Roundabout is going in there at some points. Is that correct?
Twenty seven, twenty twenty eight is what we have last heard.
So I potentially would just be concerned long term, what if if other businesses took advantage of being built up like this and have an influx of additional residents.
Uh, every project that comes through has to go through a concurrency review that includes traffic analysis and if they are going to trip create levels of service standards that fall below thresholds, then they have to mitigate for that or we can't project. So that's kind of the the restriction that keeps things from getting out of hand.
And so it let's say there's no mitigation procedure, then they can't go for, right? Like if there's something right, it's exactly not.
Yeah, they cannot bring that level of service up. If you have some improvement, then we can't for the project. Thanks. Um, so.
Easy one, right?
Yeah. So the next one is a lot more complex. You guys have the whole list. Um, this is a docket submitted by the Snoqualmie Tribe and they had comments throughout our comprehensive plan. So in multiple elements. Uh, we just do not have the staff time to address all that and to open the whole complaint again this year. That's a major process that we do once every ten years. Um, however, we do feel like there is opportunity for three elements in particular to open in twenty twenty six, because there's other purposes also um that we'd need to open those for. And so when you batch things together, it makes sense to open um first the economic development element because the Economic Development Commission, James and Caitlin are working on a innovation. What's the name of it?
It's a creative economy plan.
Yeah.
Yep. So we will be partnering with the City of Snoqualmie to assess the local creatives and makers in both of our communities. Identify what our strengths are, where our focus points should be, what challenges and barriers they have to operating businesses and how we can elevate them. So those are that that report will ultimately include engagement with them along with policy recommendations, which is something we would want to integrate into the economic development element.
So with opening that element, it makes sense to address the tribe comments um appropriate to be addressed in the economic development element. So the same thing goes for two other elements, the parks element. Uh, we need to address actually an urban forestry inventory requirement from the state that's supposed to be in your parks element. So as we address that, it makes sense to address um some of the Snoqualmie Tribe's comments in that at the same time. And then third, um, the what was the third one? Capital facilities element. So um, we have the new police service contract for King County Sheriff's Office. And so we really do need to change our capital facilities element to reflect that. Um, that's a pretty significant change. Uh, and then also with that, we want to provide some things in the capital facilities plan about um making improvements to the old CED annex building to serve as one of their offices. And to be able to provide any kind of impact fee funds or other funds to that has to be in the capital facilities plan. So we need to open that. So likewise, we'll um address some of the Snoqualmie Tribe's comments on those things. Um, as you'll see in the staff recommendations in the staff response to each of the tribe's comments, some of them we do not feel are appropriate to address. Uh, a lot of times it's because it's the policy suggestion is just getting too wordy. We always want to keep a policy focused on its intended subject. And if a policy is trying to address subject A and you're trying to add B, C, D, and E to that, suddenly it's watered down and it doesn't have the intended purpose. So there's a lot of suggestions that the tribe has suggested on certain policies that we said, no, that's getting too complicated or too off topic. We we can create other policies to address those situations, but not just add on.
Do you know why the tribe came forward now? Cause they were part of the comprehensive plans update just barely.
Yes, and we addressed a lot of their comments.
Yes.
Or a bit as well. So I think that they've hired a new staff person to do a lot of policy review. And so I think it's something. So with the staff recommendation there is to address selected comments from the tribe in their docket in the capital facilities element, parks element and economic development.
And just to clarify, when you say to open, you know, this up, you're saying that's too labor and time intensive because it will require bringing it to planning commission and then pending approval of that, then going to city council and having to track all that, right? That's why that's why I opened it up. Yeah, because some of these are just adding a sentence that which it's like, yeah, you can have sentence, but if you added that sentence, you would have to go through the whole process of.
Yeah, opening that chapter.
Thanks. Yeah, that's that's what I thought.
Notification and and a lot of process. And a lot of those other chapters that they had provided comment on were also bound to open those in our mid-cycle review. So we have our shoreline regulations that we will have to open in twenty twenty eight to make some amended amendments required by the state. We'll also have to develop our climate element, which will be next year's work plan. So a lot of their co- climate related comments will be addressing that at that time.
It seems very reasonable in my personal opinion, because we, it's not like when when we just did, yeah, so. I think a plan sounds great. But other thoughts?
How how much are they engaged when we did it just recently?
Very, very, yeah.
Very.
Interesting. So now these are just new comments that they're making. Yeah. Uh, I did have a couple of questions. Yep, but got a thing else, but uh, I noticed the land use amendment. This is one of our default responses. This suggested amendment may be considered during the city's next update, the land use element. Uh, is it possible to get an estimated date on that? Just so like.
Twenty twenty, probably twenty nine will probably be opening it as a part of our mid-cycle review, twenty twenty eight.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be great just as a reference on this as I'm reading through, just so I know, like, have a point in time, like the next time we look at this for updates in three years. I was interested in why, I'm not an apologist. Um, we did a lot of these blanket, and I know you guys did a lot of looking at these, they're not default answers. Um, water conservation concerns that they had. Uh, the next updated review, I believe stated here is twenty twenty nine. And I was just curious, there's a lot that could change between now and twenty twenty nine, namely in ball parking results looking up like we're expected at a current rate of growth to increase by fifty million gallons of water consumption a year. Is it necessary or well, just to really look into these to ensure that they're not things that should be addressed? Like there won't be problems that are massively exacerbated waiting for three more years to look.
No, our our water system plan is a twenty year plan. So we have the capacity.
And let's see. I think I had another one. Kind of an odd comment. I was just looking more into it. We had BAS, which is the best available science, and there was a comparison with indigenous knowledge.
Mm hmm.
I think I apologize, I read this a few days ago. We were saying rely on BAS and as a result, we're not leveraging indigenous knowledge?
No, I think the comparison there is best available science has kind of standards and expectations about what that can include. Traditional knowledge does not necessarily. And so however, it could be considered under best available science criteria. So if the state recognizes certain aspects of traditional knowledge as best available science, there's structure to it and there's something that we can hang our hat on to say, yes, we're going to rely on this to create our our regulations. Without that, it it's possible that traditional knowledge could just be an individual determination, which would not be appropriate for making policy and regulatory um changes based on.
And I think that was where my question was. I think just in my loose research was that the state does recognize indigenous knowledge as almost a partnership of BAS in certain level. So it sounds like if the state recognizes it, then we have the city.
Yeah.
Those were all.
Were there, I I don't know if it was a sneeze or if it was somebody online that was wanting to chime in on this. Uh, Commissioner Matlock or Commissioner Fitzgibbons, did you have anything on this?
No.
Yeah, I I just think it's very reasonable to um only tackle the three um table the other ones for um a while until we get to those um later down the the line. So I'm in favor of what staff has recommended.
Perfect. Thank you. And any other thoughts from commissioners? In person?
Where can we? I'd love to learn more about the water consumption. I know it was repeated multiple times in this. So this was historic lows the last year or two on Snoqualmie River. And we've got a twenty year plan, it sounds like. I'm just, I would love to learn more about it. Like we have apparently sometimes here we have a ton of water. Everyone else seems to think there's a dearth of water. Just love to be more knowledgeable.
Yeah, it's incredibly complicated. So a lot of the water comments that the tribe is concerned about is related to river flow. Um, so that's monitored by the Department of Ecology. Uh, our commitment to that is to make sure that there is a minimum river flow and when the river drops below a certain point, we're required to mitigate um by bringing additional flow from Seattle watershed, which we pipe in uh to supplement the flows to make sure that our drawdown um based on our offer creating a problem for the river flows. Uh, Tom Moore, our public works director, would have a lot more information for you on that. He manages our water system plan and.
Yeah, I'll chat with him. Always curious. And then the Seattle reservoir, has that been impacted like the other reservoirs in the area? Like I know that Ketchel, List of the Cheese, which obviously feeling agriculture have been all time lows as well. Is that not affecting the Chester Morris reservoir?
Uh, there's no agriculture drawing from Chester Morris, so it'll be different. Yeah, I'm not.
Yeah, it's probably not the floor I'm for. I'd be right here. Maybe I'll set up a meeting.
One question I did not ask about the previous docket was just, is it a code change for the Moller docket? Is it code change or comp change?
Just change. So that's literally just opening that eighteen ten oh three oh to say second floor residential is permitted in this zone period without a foot.
I was confused just because the the application says comp plan and development. So I just wanted to verify that it was just just about.
Yeah. So that's, I think we've got the recommendation together. So the rest of it is the planning commission work plan. So we took those dockets and then we also thought about what else do we need to do for the rest of the year based on other priorities, state obligations, et cetera. And so that is.
Fifty seven.
Fifty seven. Thank you. So we'll run through those and discuss those a little bit. We've organized that into four kind of primary focus goals that we want to um think about in the year ahead and and the council is going to see these as well with a lot of their kind of visioning and various exercises. So the first one is housing. So housing, we're in a crisis for housing statewide. And this state legislature is continuing to provide additional legislation, trying to make housing more affordable and easier to produce. So we've got a number of things that we want to do uh in that direction, um beyond just what's required by the state, but thinking about how can we make housing easier in North Bend. Second one is streamlining development review and increasing efficiency. So we are very restrict restricted um with staff time. We only have really three of us in the department that have the opportunity to make these changes to staff the planning commission, the parks commission, economic development commission. And with the amount of development review occurring and then the amount of stuff that we do for the state, it's beyond our staff capacity. So we're trying to figure out how can we do more with less. So uh, we want to bring those in as criteria for review when we're bringing code amendments. Does this help us to increase our efficiency in bringing through development? And uh, making decisions. Um, the next one is promoting economic development. So long term, we want to make sure that the city is in financial position to be self sufficient. We don't want to create a situation where development um or decisions put us into a situation of debt. So that often happens with cities and we want to make sure that we're creating a framework for development that supports our long term picture. So that's by by way of looking at zoning, by way of um our impact fees, things that either attract or chase away the right kinds of development. Um, and then finally, just addressing the state requirements, making sure that we're consistent with that um in amendments that we need to do. So then diving further into what we're actually looking at, um, one of the first things is the joint visioning workshop. So sometime probably in early twenty twenty six, the council will have their own uh council retreat, I believe in February. And so probably March, April or May at their direction, we would like to set up a meeting with the planning commission and council to talk about some broad visioning uh topics. So probably focused on those four goals, um, but that's really going to be at the direction of the council. The complaint amendments we've talked about, um, capital facilities, the parks and economic development elements. Um, the fourth one there is it's on there. We may be able to get started with you guys, but it's going to depend on um when we get a grant. So we do need to begin climate element due to the state in twenty twenty nine. And uh, I just found out the state's going to be opening up a grant cycle in January, so I need to figure out if we can put together an application by then. If not, it would be probably a grant cycle later in the year. And so just depending on when we get started on that, you may see that in twenty seven and or maybe in twenty or twenty six or maybe in twenty seven. Right, um. So evaluating fiscal impact and. So evaluating fiscal impact and efficiency, so in pursuit of that goal, we actually want to make that a review criteria. So whenever we bring a staff report to the planning commission, we're evaluating certain things, like how does this impact the neighbors? How does this impact the environment? We want to make other criteria about how does this impact our city's bottom line long-term? And then how does this also impact our ability to quickly process applications? Sign regulations, it's ongoing, hopefully wrap that up here, early twenty twenty-five or twenty-six. Unit lot subdivision regulations, those are one of those state mandates that it's trying to make creating housing easier. And so that's a simplified version of a short flat. That allows you to do multiple lots together in one review. So it's kind of like a condo, but intended for things like cottages and townhomes and so forth. Lot splitting, that's another one, that's a new requirement by the state, we want to create a new chapter for that. And that's where you've got your existing single-family lot, and it's this much simpler way to just divide that in half than the short flat process.
Does that include five lots?
Yeah, good. Binding site plan regulations, there are some new state requirements, this is a pretty simple one that you can now use the binding site plan process for condos. So previously, the binding site plans could only be used when it's in a commercial zone. So now the state's, it doesn't matter what zone it's in, you can use that for residential as well. Okay, six is to address that docket about the upper-floor residential and interchange commercial zone. Seven is transportation and park impact fees, so you recall last year we did that for residential. We structured it to scale the impact fee to building size based on state requirements to try to make it more affordable for smaller units. This is a second part to that, doesn't have to do with residential, but now we're looking at commercial impact fees. So we have to make our impact fees in alignment with our capital facilities plan. So in particular for transportation, making sure that aligns, which is required for state law. But while we're doing that, we also want to look at how can we incentivize the right types of businesses? So businesses that are going to bring in jobs and revenue, tax revenue to the city. Considering ways that we can lower the impact fees for those to make it more attractive for those to come. Parking regulations, we have a number of state requirements that we are doing. One of those is to eliminate parking requirements for affordable housing projects. So that's a new state mandate. While we're in there, we also just want to have, there's a number of other things that we want to consider, such as bicycle parking, currently our code doesn't require bicycle parking. We feel like that's a good thing to start promoting people's biking making it easier to do. Multi-family tax exemption is MFTE, so we have a multi-family tax exemption provision right now just for the river-run apartments, it was kind of set up as a demonstration project. And that's, the multi-family tax exemption program is a state program that you can get tax credits for developing affordable housing, affordable multi-family housing that meets certain criteria. So we want to now expand that program to apply throughout the city, so if you meet those criteria for affordable housing, you should be able to use this state program no matter where you are. Residential design standards, so planning commission looked at those last year. When we brought that to council, the council said, at this point, we're only ready to address what was required, required specifically by the state. We want to come back, and there's additional things that we want to do in there that go beyond what's just required by the state, but we felt like were good things to do for streamlining and for clarifying the intent of regulations. Also, some specific clarifications. Townhomes right now are considered a single-family topology under parts of our code, but a multi-family and others. So we need to clear that, clarify that, especially in our design standards to make it a little more clear for developers. Friends improvements, so this is again about economic development. Right now, frontage improvements are required when you exceed a threshold of fifty percent of the value of a structure. That can be a little bit steep, especially when you're considering a low-value structure. The food bank is an example, so well, actually, that's an example that fell under the threshold. But oftentimes, when there's a building that's a low value because it's an old building or it's not, you know, it's more of a warehouse-type building. That, then, and any kind of improvements can get you over that threshold quickly, which maybe isn't fair for all circumstances, so we want to add a little bit more refinement to those criteria in the consideration of when frontage improvements are appropriate. The rest of these are a little further out, we want to get to them, but it's possible, just give them the sake of time. These might bump into twenty twenty-seven, but tree regulations. So Kaylin is interested to lead that one, and that's going to be a pretty significant overhaul of our tree regulations. We want to do two things with it, we want to provide better criteria for when trees should be preserved. I think you've seen probably the Ichijo subdivision, the clearing for that, we've got a lot of comments from the community out of concern about that, yeah. That met our criteria.
It's a lot.
But at the same time, we also want to simplify the regulations because they're very complicated to review right now.
They are also very specific to brand-new site development, like Ichijo, and not so specific of instances where developers redoing an existing parking lot, or there is residential tree removal. It's not very specific to that, those kinds of situations, smaller situations. Not to get too off-topic, but they're obviously clearing right now for that subdivision. When did they start doing curb and gutter kind of stuff, or is that way down along the line?
It could be fairly soon, so they have the clearing grid and permit issued now, so it's just a matter of how long it takes to It's called Moria Estates, so it's just east of Wood River.
It's right by it falls.
They started, they removed all the trees there, it's starting to.
Yeah, they removed more trees than what you would normally see in that area specifically. Because they preserved a whole lot more trees toward the river than what they otherwise wouldn't have done.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit of a trade-off, you see a lot of clearing by the road, but further into the site, there's a lot of protected area that they otherwise couldn't have developed.
How many houses are there that they need to build, that's forty?
I think it's forty-six.
Forty-six.
And they're bigger lots, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Similar to the river, I think so.
And that impacts that property on the point there is like twenty million dollars.
Which one?
Kate is super cool to look at. Yeah, or a little further, it's just after House Rocks on the river, because I kayak and I look back at it, it looks like Hogwarts up there in the weird.
Really?
But I wonder if that'll negatively impact their value.
I'm sure they don't like it.
Totally, there is no clearing in this area, so the clearing is really just this.
So it ends.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that's part of it, is they preserved everything in this area, even outside of the critical area.
Yeah.
Just going.
Yeah.
Sorry, to digress.
Okay, is the, I'm sorry, I know we're tangents, did the National Guard actually purchase land here in Trucktown as well?
Yes, they have, so they, they haven't yet acted on that, we had a public hearing on that two weeks ago. So the developer is developing the property on behalf of the garden. Whether or not the, the guard actually goes there depends on a number of other scenarios. So there's two options, it's either going to be the National Guard, or it would be a commercial and light industrial.
Where, where is that?
It's this.
Oh, is the one that the guy came and presented master plan for us? So he sold to the, to the National Guard?
The National Guard is the property owner, but not the developer.
Yeah, I thought the garden option was gone, but.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I was a little surprised.
So C con is the developer?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I distracted everybody, I was curious if it was going to be an armory or a service training center or something.
Possibilities.
Yes.
As a readiness center.
I'm relating to this, do you know, when does the hearing examiner issue a decision? I, I mean, I went to that hearing.
Yeah.
Do you know?
Probably another couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
It's like a long, okay.
Hearing examiners towards the end of the year get very, very busy with a lot of people trying to get their hearing in before the end of the year. So the response time for official decision is a little bit longer than usual right now.
That's my first experience with hearing examiners. Okay, oh, when do we hear about this? And will it be noticed when his decision is, is issued, like, or do you, or like, will it be public notice, or will it just go to you guys and be like, okay?
No, we, we issue a notice.
Okay, thanks.
And sorry, is the hearing examiner in Issaquah, or is it? I'm getting to know a local government in Washington, so it's not through North Bend, it's through.
Independent hearing examiner.
Okay.
He consults with a number of jurisdictions and provides hearing services.
Okay, so is he assigned through the state or?
He's not assigned, it's a contract with the city.
Okay, right. Okay, if we don't, we're a small enough city that we wouldn't have our own.
The last, is that the last one? Number thirteen, so that's our medium density residential zone, and really that's just a rename of what was the cottage residential zone. We want to now make amendments to bring greater flexibility to the types of units that you can do. Because it's largely still just cottages, and there's some allowance for standard single-family. But we'd like to expand that to be more of your true missing middle typologies, so you're not just cottages, but kind of four-plex in a manor home typology, it looks like a standard single-family home, but can have up to four units in it. Duplexes, triplexes, et cetera.
I've been doing this too long. I've been doing this too long, I saw you on three journeys now.
Yeah, you were on the planning commission when that was reviewed previously.
It's been a third time I've been to the big density.
Yeah.
So has your percep, your perception changed?
All right, number fourteen is a similar story to the design standard, so this is amendments that you, you guys have reviewed. That we'd like to come back, make additional refinements. When this went to council, they said the same thing, they said only address what you need to do for the state for this point. But we'd like to come back and consider some things like the height. Residential height on the ground floor away from North Bend Way, we want to consider ground floor multi-family in the DC zone. And then just some additional refinements. Non-conforming regulation amendments, so right now, non-conforming uses can continue. And that often, what that means is sometimes when you have a new use that comes in, they can continue to utilize those non-conforming situations of a property. And more specifically, we're thinking about like gravel parking lots. So an example was, we had an application that came in that could have created water quality impacts because of the nature of the use, parking vehicles that could leak on the gravel parking lot. So we want to think about what criteria could we apply to provide clear regulation for water quality and certain other parameters that should not just fall under the non-conforming allowance. Sixteen, long-term interim use regulations, so this is where, it's again in the idea of promoting up economic development, allowing people to better utilize their properties. Right now, we have these short-term use regulations that allow you to use a property for up to forty-five days for limited number of things as a temporary use. And that's really intended more for, I want to, you know, park my RV and sell strawberries out of it for season. Kind of thing. This is beyond that, there's a lot of circumstances where somebody needs to start generating revenue to their property in order to be able to then put together an application to do something bigger. So instead of requiring the full gamut of side improvements, of sidewalks, gutters, plantar strips, landscaping, stormwater, et cetera, we want to have an interim regulation that allows the use of the property, meeting certain minimum criteria, but not the full development that would be required for permanent use. All right, lot ahead. And then development agreements, so the Honig property is a very large property right here.
Oh, yeah.
That one is most likely to come in seeking a development agreement in this next year. So development agreement would come before the planning commission, right now that is zoned. It's not neighborhood business, yeah, it is neighborhood business, or neighborhood mixed use. And their interests do more residential than what that allows right now. So that would come before the planning commission for considering what are the parameters, what are the public benefits received to the city for trade-offs, what they're looking to do with their application. The Honing family.
They're local.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, Cherry Cooper, I believe, is on the call, yeah, so Cherry Cooper is the representative of the owners.
Interesting, I see it released all the time, I kept hoping I'd turn it into a dog park.
I guess we'll see the development improvement when it comes, but are they thinking multi-family or single-family? I always have to take a deep breath whenever I see development agreement. I don't love development agreements.
They're a lot of work, but they can be less work than the broader master plan process.
Yep, it's true. No, my, my concern with them is the potential for spot zoning, that's, that's my worry with the health improvements, it's not.
Well, this is a very large problem, so.
True, absolutely.
Something that, kind of the master plan is the intent there, that you're thinking of impacts to adjacent seeds, you're thinking of circulation patterns. A lot of things together.
Yes, it's good.
Yeah, so it is very ambitious, and we're not going to get through all that, but we can get through as much of it as we can. Look for the planning commission's recommendation on that, together with the dockets.
Yeah, it looks like a good plan. Thoughts, questions, comments? Anybody online?
Yeah, it does look like a good plan, and like you said, it's an ambitious plan, but I'm looking forward to seeing how much you accomplish.
I'm not seeing any off months for us.
No. Add in some realistic breaks.
All right, well, I guess unless Seth has more comments on item five, we will move on to item six.
But it would be nice to have a recommendation approval.
Okay, I, I think as a whole, I think the planning commission is supportive of your docket list and planning commission work plan, are there any concerns? Nope, I think, I think we're all in favor.
Would somebody be willing to make a motion on that?
Motion to.
Okay, sorry.
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-six docket.
All in favor? And none opposed, right, Commissioner Fitzgibbons?
Correct, yes.
All right, I apologize, I was used to just chatting with the sign regulations, I forgot that we had to do a motion for that one. Because we had no public hearing on any of this tonight, so we are on to item number six, the request for planning commission chair to present twenty twenty-five planning commission accomplishments and twenty twenty-six work fund to city council.
Yeah, so I sent Hannah an email today shortly before the meeting. But the idea is, it would be fantastic to have a little bit of face time before the council for them to be able to recognize the huge amount of work that you guys did. for them to be able to recognize the huge amount of work that you guys do and providing recommendations to them. And so as a part of presenting this, because ultimately the planning, the council needs to approve of the planning commission's work plan for the year. So as a part of that, it'd be nice to also celebrate the accomplishments that you did in twenty twenty five. So I think it'd be nice for the chair to present. Anybody else would be welcome to come. And that would be at the January sixth council, sixth, yeah, January second council meeting. Where you, you could provide just some of the highlights and some of the things that we asked, the planning commission recommended for council passage in twenty twenty five. And then I can take it from there to talk about the work plan ahead, unless there's anything out of that that you're interested to speak.
Friday, right?
No, Tuesday.
Yeah, is it the second or the sixth?
Whatever that, oh, so it's Tuesday. Oh, so it's the sixth. Okay.
And then previously Rebecca had created a slideshow. I don't care if you do a slideshow or not. Do you want me to just talk to the city council or is that something that I should follow that you're putting together? I'm not.
There's not a lot of easy visuals. So I think just a verbal presentation would be fantastic.
Make sure that like I'm following your lead on.
There's not an expectation of what it has to.
And do we need a motion on that?
No. For the chance to touch base and if you were available for that, invite any other commissioners back in as well.
Hey. And I think we're on to item seven, which is, which is the adjournment, which is seven forty one.
Will we have any other meeting this year?
No, yeah, I actually wanted to ask you about that. We were planning to cancel your next meeting because it's close to Christmas, December seventeen.
Are you looking for approval of that?
As long as you're okay, we don't need a motion on that. And then December ten. So that is going to be our commissioner appreciation night.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah. That'll be at the North Bend downtown golf.
The golf, okay.
And we'll have appetizers and actually I think it's a dinner, so.
I don't think that I got a receipt on that.
Yeah, you can RSVP to help us.
Yeah. The golf center is the, the old single track.
Yes.
Yeah.
It just says food and non-alcoholic beverages be provided. Feel free to bring a spouse or a plus one.
Well, I am curious. So my emails, I'm getting the emails for the meetings and I used to like RSVP on the calendar, but now that's not showing up for me anymore. It should though, right? It's showing up for everybody else.
I know what you're talking about. Jamie always says, I also included the packet in your calendar invite, but I don't get any notification about that. So instead I open up Outlook, which I don't, I only use Outlook for this thing. So I open up my Outlook app. Find that there's a calendar section and I go to the meeting date and I RSVP for the meetings there. We used to get something in the inbox that you just, yes.
It's integrated into the account. On its own, you're not getting certain, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to look.
But I don't get notifications from the cows.
Yeah. Me too. See, it's different, right? And I used to get it on my phone. I don't get it on my phone anymore. So it's like the service that cuts somehow. Still getting half of it.
But it may be a setting thing, so.
Must be. They probably updated something and I didn't do it, so. But same, I don't use it a lot, so if they updated it without my knowledge, that's probably why.
All right, well, we look forward to seeing you guys there.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Do they serve alcohol on their own? Like if we, we'd be able.
They have alcohol. Need to have alcohol. It makes me feel terrible. I'm handling one of these. Okay, have wine.
Okay.
Where, which side is the entrance to the golf club on? Is it from North Bend way or is it from the alley?
Yeah, North Bend way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Well, you guys have a good night.
Bye.